Called this regular meeting of city council order here today. Stafford County Annex, May 19th, 2020. I have one addition to the agenda, an executive session for five minutes for non-elected personnel to go under the discussion of swimming pool personnel. Any other additions to the agenda this evening?
I need a 10-minute executive session, non-elected personnel, attorney-client.
Under...
Just, we'll do it at the end.
Okay. You said 10 minutes?
10 minutes.
Any other additions to the agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Do we have any citizens' comments this evening? Okay. Consent agenda, approved minutes, regular council meeting, May 5th, 2020.
Can I get a sub? Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Motion carries. Appropriation ordinance, 5-15, 2020, in the amount of $48,194.28. Can I get a motion?
Sub move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in.
Jamie, under that, there was like an $1,800 bill for a drive shaft. On water pickups. You know anything about that?
Not that it came to me.
Okay. I just think that's kind of high for a drive shaft. We might do some asking and see what that's about.
Yes.
Maybe let us know next meeting, please.
Yep.
Thanks.
633 is the number.
Any other discussion? Can I get a motion on that? Do we have a motion?
Sorry.
Okay, sorry about that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Okay. Approve invoices, overspending limits. First one is the Stanion for the amount of $2,611.47.
Sub move.
Say it. Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Second one, TNR Electric, in the amount of $2,400.
Sub move.
Say it. Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the last one.
I'm sorry. Are they, are those wells running now, Jamie? Do you know west of town?
I don't know.
They were running, yeah. Yeah, last time I knew they were, but I don't know.
Okay.
I think they were on and off, on and off, all the time.
Okay.
All right. Last one here, CPS, in the amount of $2,226.
Sub move.
Say it. Okay, any discussion on that? All in favor say aye. Oh, I'm sorry.
I assume that's all done, Jamie.
It is complete.
Okay. Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. We have a discussion with re-department, rec department, excuse me.
I'm up?
Yes, sir.
Dive into it? How do you guys want me to start? First off, I was kind of just brainstorming. I was looking through our policy. And I am supposed to be your guys' point of contact for everything. Now, my number's always plastered all over Facebook and stuff like that. If you don't have it and you want it, it's not hard to get. But I figured I could probably do a better job of keeping you guys in the loop. Whether that's coming the first meeting every month or, you know, writing a paragraph and giving it to Jamie or just, you know, just kind of keeping you up. Because I feel like this whole thing probably could have been avoided just with a little bit more communication throughout the whole process. So, to start, back in fall of 2019, I applied for a grant to the Royals Charities. We were awarded a $5,000 grant for the baseball field, for this project. Now, he's going to come in, wipe dirt away. Jeff told me today he wants the dirt. And he's going to have that, when he's done with it, the guy that's doing all this, he's going to have this thing, one of the nicest infield's, baseball fields in the state. And our idea, our idea behind that is that we want to have competitors, young and old, you know, slow pitch softball down to six and seven-year-old state tournaments here in town. And get people visiting St. John's, spending their money here, and getting that tax revenue to go up on those weekends. I've talked to a couple of different recs when they host those Babe Ruth State tournaments, which is only seven or eight teams, takes a couple of days. Their tax revenue that weekend, sales tax revenue goes up 300%, you know, on those weekends. So that's what we're after. You know, we want that thing looking nice, we want it busy, and we want to get the most out of the weekend. Okay? If you want me to continue here. I feel like we have two options. We might have more. You guys, of course, can come back with whatever. But the first option that we kind of came up with was that we, of course, just like we're taking over the mowing and stuff like that, that we will take care of water in the field for the city, because it's still your guys' property. We have a big water reel that we have. We're probably not going to put in a sprinkler system anytime soon, but we have the big water reel that was broke, probably hadn't been used for the last six, seven years. You guys know how well the previous guy took care of things. Davis has got that fixed up for us, so we're ready to go with that. So, we take care of the watering. We would remove the meter, okay? And then we would split the cost of the city putting in the meter all the time, the meter cost, everything that recently incurred. And then you guys would water the baseball field, kind of like a park. Obviously, we wouldn't water it every day, probably twice a week, max. And of course, we wouldn't be watering late fall, early spring unless we're playing grassy. But that option prevents the rec from having to spend thousands of taxpayer dollars to water the ball. We feel like that is the cheapest option for the taxpayers, everybody involved. The other option that we have is that, and this is the shorter one, we split the cost that recently incurred, and then we will drill the well. I did some checking. I didn't call all over the state, but I called Pratt, I called Larned, Stafford, and Ellwood to see what their situations are. Every surrounding community, city takes care of watering for the field. About 75% of those fields are city-owned, and then 25% of them are actually rec-owned properties, but the city still takes care of the water. And with that, I'll leave the floor to you guys.
So you're talking about splitting the cost of the meter and the labor?
Yeah, everything that we kind of got dismissed.
And then we pull it out and you put a well in, as one of the options? Or split it and we water it? How much water does that sprinkler use, you know?
We never, I have no idea.
Right.
About 60.
That's a lot of water.
And part of it, Dan, is, you know, if we were to water, and the way, the way the city's set up is everything goes through the water treatment facility, and that's extremely expensive to run. So it goes through that, it goes back to you, and, you know, everything that goes through there, the salt is expensive, and that's why our water rates are so high. You know, if the city were to pay for that, you know, I mean, that's, that's tax dollars used too, so.
Correct.
You know?
Do you plan on ever having to use that water that's up there that the city has?
Well, we have to, we need to discuss that for the night, so just Jamie was saying that it might not be working again. And that guy is supposed to be here tomorrow to start on that. We've already missed a couple deadlines, so I'll have to...
Was it not working yet?
The two unchecked up, I guess, something underground.
Jason said he'd talk to you about the drainage.
Okay, he's got, he's got to fix the drain on it.
And he didn't want to fix it if we're just going to drill the well. Because he said he's going to have to completely dig it out, and it's going to be...
Right. Dig it up. It's in between the meter and the main city line. There's a, used to be a drain in there, drain in the line in wintertime. It had to be dug up and fixed.
But I would think, you know, obviously, with still, right now, regardless of the use or not, we'd get a meter for that hook up in the outfield, in the concession stand, for sort of the two waters, and then the lighting in the outfield, and then the lighting, or the electricity, the electricity concession stand. So we wouldn't have a problem if we did keep it there and pay that minimum. I would assume that it would be used, I mean, obviously, it's going to be used the next week when this guy's here. And I assume it'd get used every so often, but if that meter's worth it to you guys to pull out, then we could probably tie that hook up into a well if we did drill one.
I don't know. We haven't ordered us to go through two hundred meter dude?
Yeah, not right now. I see him as reasoning, or they just didn't have one laying around, but...
Yeah, so we ordered that meter specific where we had it, or...
We had it more specifically.
And it's the only place to use it, is there?
Currently.
Currently, I think, right now, yes, yeah. I think usually they keep on stock, in stock, everything that they have out there.
But if that's the only one, then we wouldn't really need that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
You know, I just don't know, I mean, if we, I don't have a problem, I guess, working something out. I just think that if we don't get something for that meter, it'll take us almost 10 years to pay for it if it sits there and never pumps water.
Yeah.
That $2,000, I mean, it's just a bare minimum, $1,750 a month. That's $210 a year, that's nine and a half years before it's paid off at the minimum. But I think it would benefit you, even if we did let you drill a well, that you still pay the minimum and have access to it if you ever, if your well ever goes down or something happens, you would still have a meter there instead of just pulling it out and setting it on the shelf.
Yeah. Yeah.
I, I think they sure want to drill their own well.
Yeah.
And be in total control of it, and do your own watering however you see fit, and with your mowing schedule, and you have nobody to communicate with but yourselves on it. And I think that's got to happen no matter what. That's, that's what should happen to begin with.
Yeah.
I agree. I think having your own well's the way to go. I think we just need to kind of sort of agree on getting some of that expense we, you know, for the meter and some of the time back. And I'm all for you guys having your own well and being able to operate it the way you want it to, so.
It's fine.
So would you guys want to split the just cost of the meter, or meter and labor and everything with them and let them drill a well?
So, Dan, are you guys wanting to leave that meter there and use it at some point? No, I mean...
Really, it's up for you guys to decide if you want that meter or not. I mean, kind of like Marshall said, it's kind of a convenience thing, you know, to have it there.
Yeah.
I guess I thought that we may have another use to that meter, but if we don't, I guess it probably makes, we might as well just leave it.
It's in. I would say leave it there, and if they do need it, it's not like we're running down there when they have a noose and don't have water. They need to water.
Yeah.
I mean, it's already installed. If they want to pay half of it, and then just a meter cost every month or whatever.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
I mean, if you're good with that, I'm, split half the cost of the material, and then let you drill a well, because I think a well's probably going to better suit you guys. And don't get me wrong, I'd like to get the revenue off of you, but it is taxpayer money. I mean...
Yeah. And, yeah.
As long as they're okay with paying the minimum.
Yeah. If they want to keep the meter there for convenience, then, you know...
Is that acceptable?
I think it will be. It's $20 a month.
Seventeen.
Seven.
Yeah, seventeen. Yeah, seventeen and change.
What?
$1,750.
$1,745?
Close enough.
Yeah, I'm getting them down, I promise.
So do we just need to make a motion to allow them to go ahead and drill it?
Thousand, $1,000, leave the meter.
$1,000 to leave the meter, and then...
Let them drill a well.
Let them drill a well.
Could you just invoice?
I'm fine.
Yeah, we can make a missed line.
So we don't need a motion?
Well, you could do, you do a motion that upon, subject to their payment of the invoice, that city's okay with them to drill their own well. Because they have to, the city has to sign off on the application, right?
Yeah.
We have to approve them to be able to drill a well.
So you would approve upon payment of the invoice for $1,000, or whatever the amount is? Approval of the application for them to drill a well? Are you going to have to get this approved by your board, or you've got to go ahead and do that?
I should, I should probably, I'm willing to take action, but I'll run everything by. The only thing I would assume they will ask is just a detailed, itemized deal, and we break that down for the cost. I don't want to get anything started, but somebody had told one of our board members that that was a used meter and stuff like that, so one of them had that question, and...
And you can show the invoice when you pass it last month.
Just as long as it's all broken down, all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. But if it's good...
I don't think that would be a problem.
As far as, so Ryan, with that, with the two-inch hookup that's in there right now, will we be able to use that, or...
The city will need to fix the leak in between the meter and the city main, and then you will be able to use that.
What's the, what, I'm sure they're busy, so what's the...
Right. So you got, you got someone coming?
So he'll be here tomorrow. Now, he says this will be a five, six-day project, so he's not going to be watering up until, you know, the last couple of days, when he has to get that stuff to break down.
So if they maybe had it fixed by the end of the week, probably would be...
Yeah, if that's possible. I mean, and if it can't do it, then we just need to reschedule it.
Jason's taking off the rest of the week, and I believe Jeff is starting the electric project on Northwest Street tomorrow.
Tomorrow, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, I guess, what if I don't...
I don't know how long the, I don't know how long Jeff will...
Right. Yeah. Got a long one to take up there?
I mean, I don't want to say that it'll be done and it not...
So there's a, it won't work at all?
No, I think it's pumping water down.
It's leaking so bad. Once he, once he turns the city main on to go to the meter, it leaks so much out of there. It's a, oh, it's a king drain where it basically, once it's pressured out, then it holds, but once you let the pressure off, it drains the whole line, so in the wintertime, it doesn't freeze up. So basically, needs to be dug up and fixed. I, I guess...
Maybe next week?
Yeah. I guess. I wouldn't, I wouldn't think it'd take that long, but I don't...
I mean, I don't know how long, and maybe I can have Jeff do, I think Jeff's worried about rain coming in with the electric project. I mean, I can redirect him if you guys want me to, to have him do the ball field before he starts the electric project.
Well, if like I said, it can't get done, then, I mean, there's different avenues we can take. But this guy has told me that he'd be able to, you know, do everything up to that point until he need water, and then, you know, we could play on it all summer, and then he could come back in the fall. I don't know how much more money that would cost, but it's just something we can look into, so, I mean, I...
Is it a lot of water that you guys will need, or just kind of like...
He's specifically just requested that two-inch line. He's told me he's tried with fire trucks and tankers, and it just doesn't work, and one of those deals. But there's...
Wonder how bad that thing leaks off? If it's actually open and running water, though?
I, I don't know that. I'm pretty sure it's leaking bad, but I don't, I don't know.
That's what Jason, Jason made it sound like it was...
I mean, I'm talking, this would be like a two, three-hour, four-hour fix, you know? But, I mean, we don't have anybody else that runs backhoe, I guess, that, I don't know. I would think they could get it done by the weekend.
If Jeff's plans changed to weather, and he doesn't do that, he wasn't going to do the northwest, then maybe he could have the time, but I don't want him to change his plans if, you know, if he's really has this planned out, that he wants to work up there. But if he wants to change and has time, then I guess it'd be okay, but I don't think he should change.
I don't know.
I guess all we can say is we'll get it done just as quick as we can.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't...
Well, unfortunately, we're running on a crew of people learning too, so we don't, we don't necessarily have where we can disperse people out as, as much as we would like.
It's pretty hard to get something done by tomorrow. Because we got to have a little more time.
Is there, is there another hookup anywhere near the pool or anything that's metered that we could...
They could. The only thing they can do is hook the fire hose up to the wellhouse, how they fill the pool, and they can meter it that way, because that's how they fill the pool. They come and still the fire hose, and then that's two and a half inch stream.
Well, I'll talk to that guy.
It'll have the same amount of pressure that would be coming through that two-inch meter.
Yeah. They'd just be good with Mike and saying if he'd be willing to...
I'm pretty sure, well, just roll it out there. Because that's what the city does when they fill the pool, they can get a couple rolls of fire hose and fill it out with that well and meter it all.
I'll, I'll call him and kind of let him know, or let Jamie know what he says from there. I don't, like I said, we don't need that. I'll take Jeff off of more pressing issues for this. Anything else, guys?
Nope. I think we'll just have her get you an invoice, and she can break it down, and we'll go ahead and... We just need to make a motion for that, John, is that what you said?
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to allow the rec commission to put in a well pending payment of half of the meter charge of $1,000. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Dan. Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, I'm going to move the swimming pool up to the front so we can give Steph a time to discuss, and then we can, she can go ahead and lead at this time, so, Steph.
Just want to kind of discuss with you guys the plan as of, if we move into phase two, that we would be able to open the pool, which would be June 1st. I've talked with the staff about cleaning. I've talked with the amount of people that we need there, we'll keep track of. You know, we can make people come in and out. They need to shower before they get in the pool, so we're going to have to make sure we have somebody watching that to make sure they're cleaned off. It doesn't say take an actual, like, shower with soap, but they need to at least rinse off before they get in the pool. Otherwise, as long as we can have the pool ready to go, but I'd like to get it filled as soon as possible, because it's going to be really cold. So that's going to discourage some of our people coming swimming. You're going to have your diehards that are going to show up, that are going to want to swim. But I think we can handle it. If we can go ahead and go forward with phase two, that would be great, because these kids are looking forward to their jobs, as well as letting these kids get out of the house a little bit, find something else to do besides sit in front of the TV. So I'd like to see some of them get, be able to come swim if they want to. So, but like I said, I really don't think there's a problem. I talked to the kids about PPE, that we have to wear gloves, we have to do this. You know, gone over the safety issues, and we'll go over it again right before we open. But talked to the health department, she sent out some information. Kind of follows the same guidelines as the parks and rec stuff they sent out. We got that today too, so I think we're able to, as long as the pool's ready to go.
Where are we at on, are we close?
Well, I went down there.
We're in the process of getting Jeff to get everything ready so they can work on it, so.
The intermediate pool is really bad. I've mentioned it a couple of years in a row now, that it's cracking, and it's not like little chunks of paint, it's like thick chunks that are cracking off. So we're going to have to either get in there and scrape it, and respackle some of that intermediate pool down to temporary fix and paint over the top for now, or they're going to have to come in and probably sandblast it and repaint that intermediate pool, just from what I'm seeing. Jeff may see something totally different, I don't know, but it's, it's bad. We can't open the intermediate side right now the way it is. You kids would cut their feet, we'd have liability there. The big pool is fine paint-wise, I think, for this year. It's stained in the deep end, but it has been for a few years now. I don't, I think the last time they painted was probably right as I started, six years ago. So, and then I know we painted the blue safety lines on the steps when Cory was here, and that was five years ago, four or five? So it needs some TLC that it's not getting, but I know it doesn't make money, but I think it's something our community needs. Sometimes that's the only time I see those kids away from, mom says they're sitting in front of the TV unless they're at the pool, so. I'd hate to see us lose it and end up with a big sinkhole, so. That would not be good, so.
So when are we talking about opening the pool? Because didn't we discuss that as putting it off to like June 15th?
Is that, is that kind of the way you understand it too, Stephanie, is the, that's when we're supposed to go?
We, we're gonna, we're gonna...
When we discussed it, it wasn't that we, that's when we could open it. It can be open when, when Stephanie is talking, but we kind of just talked about waiting to, I think it was phase three, we were going to wait, because it was just a little bit less restrictive. But now that they've added 1.5, it might even add more time, and...
Phase two starts Friday. They announced about three o'clock.
I'm just thinking now that we have a, a electric project that's going on this week, and a guy that's gone, and we've got a water project that needs to go on, I think we need to stick with the June 15th and make sure that we have plenty of time to get the pool ready. If they can have it filled the first of June, it would give it 12 to 14 days to...
Yeah, because I know, I know, over the weekend, I believe Jason got the, I don't know the name of it, whatever to seal that crack that we always have an issue with. So he got the stuff to, to deal with that, but, yeah, it's, it's a lot planned and...
I guess I kind of feel like the pool gets slighted every year, just a little bit each time, so. Every year it's because of the Jubilee going on, and this year we don't have the Jubilee, and now we've always got something else that takes precedence over getting us up and going. So, I don't know. I've put in several things for several years that need to be done to the pool to keep it maintained the best of my ability, and I sometimes just don't feel like we do that. So I'd just like to see us get up and going. If we feel like we need to, for safety reasons, I understand that, due to everything that's going on. Do I feel like we can maintain it and handle it? Yeah, I do.
And some of these, some of these things, I know Jeff has talked about, I think he's talked about doing more work to the big pool next year, so maybe something you and I could work on this year is going over all of those things, so I'm aware... So maybe, um, something you and I could work on this year is going over all of those things so I'm aware of them and then we can move, you and I can move forward on being able to implement those and see what it will take, what companies we need to look at and, and things of that nature and have that, um, to be able to present, you know, by the end of the season in the fall and we can make sure that that's done before we open next year. I mean, I know it's being put off another year, but if we can make that plan and then get it presented, I think that's where we have a little bit of shortcomings sometimes is we have a lot on our plate or on our mind and it, it might not necessarily make it to the table. So if you and I could work on those things, maybe we can bring that to the table and get it, get it going.
I feel comfortable with that, but I've had a new boss every year that I've been here at the pool that I've had to talk to. So that's made it very hard because I hear that every year that I ca- I mean, I'm not saying anything bad about you, Jamie whatsoever. I'm just saying each year I come down to the pool, they're like, okay, now you're gonna report to this person, now you're gonna report to this person. Well, then I tell that person all the list of problems and maybe we fix one half of the problem of one thing on the list and that's it that gets done. I did see they fixed the slide. I'm super excited to see if that works this year. So I do appreciate that, that they did that and they fixed the leak on the, near the deep end by the faucet where it was causing a problem. So I do appreciate what they've done. I just want everybody to know my side here that it's kind of frustrating each year to bring stuff to you guys and then you guys say, well, why do we have a problem with the pool? Well, this is why, because I've told you guys for the past four years that we have these problems, but it just never gets where it needs to. So, um, but I feel confident that if I work with Jamie, that we can get this worked out and that, you know, she'll help me stay on top and, and get a path set for next year, getting the stuff done hopefully.
So you think we have order or we have what need to fix the intermediate pool? Do we know anything about that?
I don't know if our, do our guys do the sand? I mean, if we're scraping it all, it'll need sand? I mean, I don't think that we do that, but I could be wrong.
No, the sandblasting comes in, but I don't remember what company comes in and does it. But they come in and sandblast the whole pool and then recoat it. Yes, Warren Brothers, that's who it is.
All I'm saying is you basically got seven days of our guys between now and June 1. And I just, I don't think, I don't think even with you guys helping scrape it and getting in contact with everybody else, we can have it up and ready June 1.
That seal needs to cure for-
Yeah, it's got to seven to 10, seven to 10 days, I think, at least for the paint. But like I said, I'm not sure what Jeff's plan was for the intermediate either. I just know that that's gonna take, we're gonna have to fix that one for sure this year. Okay.
All I knew that needed to be done was the crack in the middle refilled was all I was told and maybe some painting, but- And I think probably this winter, depending budget wise, we need to look and see what we can do for next year to have a good coating put on all them pools so that we aren't doing this year after year. Otherwise, we'll end up like staffing with a $3 million loan pool.
And that's my here. And like I said, I don't wanna lose the pool, so.
Jamie, get with Jeff, find out what's going on, what he's, what his thoughts are, work with Steph and guys, see if you can get that all squared away, okay? All right, at this time, I go ahead and ask for an executive session, not only for personnel, uh, for five minutes to include everyone, uh, everyone here, including Steph.
Salute.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We will resume at 39 after. Call this meeting back to order.
I would make a motion to keep Stephanie Smith pay at $6,000 for the swimming pool season and raise Allison Smith to $10 an hour, Melissa Williamson to 8.50 an hour, Bremeyer to 8.50 an hour, Tanner Holling to 8.25 an hour, Colin Holling to 8.25 an hour, Hunter Smith to 8.25 an hour, Adrian Adami to 8.25 an hour, Peyton Meyer to 8.25 an hour and Darby Smith to 8.25 an hour.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Does that all sound right?
That all sounded right, yes, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Um, so thank you guys. I appreciate you listening to me and I'm doing that for them. They'll really appreciate that, that'll help too. Um, I think Jamie and I had discussed too that they'll help do some of the painting. I won't overabundance that, you know, as far as them coming in, but we'll just utilize what we need to, to help get the job done, go.
Do we still wanna look at the 15th? Or?
What are you comfortable with, Stephanie?
Well, okay, so my opinion is, is that we can open the big pool and not open the intermediate pool. There's a valve that shuts that off, so we don't even have to use the intermediate pool and still have the big pool and get it filled. So I'm, but I'm not sure how Jeff stands on that, so I guess we need to discuss that with him as well. Um, and so then we need to take care of what's wrong with the intermediate pool. But I'd really like to see the big pool go ahead and get filled if we can do that to help it warm up, cause it's gonna be cold.
Do we need to, do we have to open the intermediate pool? Like, or could it be closed off? You know, like if we end up needing to sandblast all of the pools, could we wait until, I mean, I'm assuming that the big one might need it so we can make it last? Would it, would it be beneficial to keep that closed so we can do them all at once next year? Or have it ready for next year? Or is that asking a-
I would, I would say even temporary fix the intermediate this year and fill in where those cracks are so we don't end, end up with problems. It'd be better to wait till next year, sandblast everything and recoat everything would be the best bet.
So I guess my question is, is if we've got the stuff to fix the crack in the big pool, can we use that same stuff on the intermediate pool?
I don't, I don't think so. This is like a clear sealed stuff that goes down the seam that runs between the five foot, where the five foot starts to drop off into the deep end. There's a crack there to help the pool expand and reduce, so.
I guess if it takes seven to 10 days for the stuff in the big pool to dry, that's gonna put you not filling it till the first of the month anyway.
That's true. I didn't realize they hadn't sealed yet. I thought they-
Well, I don't know if they have or not.
I think Jeff's under the impression that we're not opening it, so I think he was gonna get the electric project done.
I, I, we did discuss the 15th.
We did, just bring us a little fact of giving us plenty of time, a lot of time.
I mean, I do think that they're, the way that they're doing things, I do believe that it was-
If we just stayed with the 15th, maybe we could get the intermediate pool and everything fixed. I mean, even if we gotta call Warren Brothers down to do some sandblasting on the intermediate? I don't know. I would say assuming we can get, get on the whole thing of getting it ready to go and maybe just not pushing our luck and just wait until the 15th or a little bit sooner if it's all done and ready to go.
This way it's all completely done and we don't have to worry about anything. And if it's done prior to the 15th, then we can-
Because we'll actually have a meeting on the second, right? So I mean, if we can get on it tomorrow and get figured out exactly what we need to do, maybe even by the second, we can change the opening date sooner.
Okay. I just, I just know it takes a long time to warm up. By now, we've usually already got the pool filled, usually about the first week of May to try to get it warmed up by the end, so the sooner we can get that big pool done. And I'll be glad, I like I said, I'm glad to go down there in the evenings or whenever they want me to go down and start working, so. We'll get that set up maybe tomorrow with Jeff and figure out and go from there. Does that work? Okay, all right, thanks guys.
Okay, moving on to department heads. Um, do we have anything from Jeff?
Yes. He called and got, um, the fuel price for you guys today and, um, the guy did say that it might change overnight, but, um, he got quoted a dollar 12 a gallon. And I asked, um, how much he's gonna need and he said about 6,000 to 7,000 gallons. So I don't have an exact, he said his tank's just under 4,000, um, for the summer fuel and he would like to fill it up.
I thought it held 15.
It, it, well, each tank holds 15 and apparently it's-
Who was that talking to?
The way I viewed it, I guess, is that what you mean, Marj?
Just, I think you talked to Jeff.
If he's wanting to fill it up, it's just under 4,000?
Oh, oh, I see, I didn't hear you ask.
That's 11,000, that's, that's what I was trying to figure out, is it six or seven or if we're filling it up, is it 11,000?
Well, we're just gonna buy a container, I mean, the bottom line to it is, we're just gonna buy a containment load, which will be 71 to 7300 is what I have to buy.
Transport load.
Yeah.
Okay.
Transport load.
At the dollar 12, I think that's a no brainer.
Yeah.
Is that what we always buy from him?
We've always bought from Hample in the past because Candy Dog would never give us a price. Because I know the last couple of years before, he's called and they've never submitted a bid on it.
I think, I think maybe we checked one year with Greg Van, but, or he did, but we kinda decided, you know, Hample buys-
Hample, yeah.
I think that's two years ago, in the last year.
So do we just buy a transport load?
Yeah, that's what, I was just asking if 6,000 to 7,000 on whether that was bomb tail or transport. Cause there's normally a pretty decent price difference, that's why I was asking. But a transport will always be over seven. At least seven to 75.
Do you want me to call them on that?
I, I think when you can just get a green light to buy a transport load of red number two.
Very good, yeah, yeah.
From Hample tomorrow.
Is that a motion?
Yeah. You want me to reset? I make a motion to have Jamie work with Jeff to buy a transport load of, uh, number two, red fuel from Hample for the power plant.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, anything else from Jeff? Okay, anything from Jason or Water Department? Nothing?
Not yet.
Okay, anybody have any comments, questions, concerns for Water Department? Okay, moving on to the Street Park Department. Anything from them? Nothing, okay. Anybody have any questions, comments, or street departments? Hey, Crime Administrator Lisa, have we heard anything from her yet? Nothing.
Did we get our golf cart?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, there should have been a street box.
That's our, yeah.
Oh, there was?
Is that what that was?
They sprayed the parks and they had started on the streets.
I saw that, I'm sure it's our, okay, good, good. Okay, um, let's see. Moving on to Police Department, Chief Adams have anything?
I don't, he didn't report anything, but he did, he has told me that, um, our part-time guy is gonna be able to go to the academy next week, I think Monday.
The 26th, Tuesday.
Tuesday, so. We had a spot from before and it was able to be filled, so that'll be nice.
What do you mean full time? Let's say our term of full time is what you think.
Yeah, full time's 14 weeks, part time's two weeks.
And I don't, I think the next, or our spot for the full times in the-
August, is it?
Well, I think it's actually, because they shut everything down, I think it's been pushed to November or December.
Yeah.
So, but they had, they had an opening in one of the part times or something, which got the part time guy and sit there.
Okay, anybody have any questions, comments, concerns for Police Department? Okay, moving on. Do we have anything from Chief Sanders? Nothing? Anybody have any comments, concerns, questions? Okay, moving on. City Administrator, Amy.
Okay. Would you guys like the office to be open now? Or would you like it to still be shut?
What do you want?
It's completely up to you guys. I mean, we'll take the necessary precautions that we need to. You know, the next couple of weeks are, the 15th was the due date, so the next couple of weeks are kind of our slower weeks with traffic in, so.
I would maybe just put a sign on the door that, you know, if you got two people in there that you don't pack it, you know?
One, one person in the car?
Yeah, maybe limited to one person.
We've opened up that threshold, so people can, people can distance themselves or wait out in the hall. I mean, it's not very often.
Five or six people in there at a time, just, I mean, I think Courthouse is still doing where they only are allowing a few, three people, up to three people in at one time.
Yeah, they were making people wait outside in Courthouse.
Yeah.
Why don't you just say you're limited to one person in the office and they can either wait outside, which I would prefer, but that's up to you, or they can wait in the hallway.
Perfect. Um, is, John, I don't know if you can speak on this. So with the executive order, shut offs for utilities has been, um, thankfully, we really don't have a ton that we're having to deal with. I had three on my radar and I sent, um, just kind of a, a reminder letter and two of those three did bring me, um, a payment. I still have not seen anything from one of them. I just wanna make sure that you guys are okay with moving forward when I get the green light to be able to, to take care of those situat- I just want you guys to be on board with being able to do that when it is allowed. Cause I know, okay.
Yeah, I would say stick to our policy when you can enforce it.
Okay. And I, I, I don't know if there's gonna be, I'll have to wait a little bit for direction with the governor's orders cause I think it's, I think it expired, it was the 31st, but I think it's moved forward a little bit now. I don't know if, John, you've paid attention to that at all?
Yeah, it's kind of a squabble whether it expires on the 26th.
Right. Or the end of the month.
Whether the legislature allows it to be extended, so. And I, even if it is, I don't know if it's necessarily gonna apply to utilities.
And, and honestly, if, we'll wait, we'll probably wait if it expires in May, we'll wait till shut off in Ju- you know, it's not like they're gonna, it's not gonna expire and I'm gonna go shut someone off the next day. I mean, we'll still provide plenty of notice and, and all of that. We're not gonna be irrational about it, so.
We still have to do the due process requirements.
And that was kind of, that was kind of why I sent those, there was some cities sending out like those reminder letters cause that is part of notifying them of, you know, I think you have to have three, two or three notifications before you can, so, I mean, we do it, so. I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that. And then, um, the budget process, I didn't know if you guys wanted to, with, with the limit, I don't know if we'll have to limit the next meeting. I don't know if we wanna schedule special sessions, um, for you guys. I am under the understanding you guys want to meet with the department heads so you can go over the, their budgets. Um, so I didn't know if you wanted to do that at an actual meeting or if we wanted to schedule different times.
I would rather do a-
Special meeting?
A special meeting and build nothing but the budget.
Absolutely.
Where we don't have to worry about everybody else. We can sit down and go through each one of the budgets one at a time.
Perfect, okay.
And you could do it, you could even do a special meeting where you're saying, you know, one department head shows up at 7, another shows up at 7:15 or 7:30, you could just stagger it like that.
I would rather do that.
Okay, so if you guys want to get thinking on some times and dates that work for you and we can get that scheduled at the next meeting, I'm gonna be, um, I've, I've been starting the budget for two days now. I've had two Mondays, so. Tomorrow, the budget worksheets will be going out for most of them. Jeff's will be a little bit, but.
So you're saying schedule it after our next meeting?
Yeah, like the, the June 2nd meeting, we can schedule-
Wouldn't we wanna have a special meeting to review everybody's-
If that's okay with you guys.
That'd be fine.
That gives them enough time, that'll be, yeah.
Yeah, they should, they should have enough time to sit down and-
Do we? Do you happen to know what, I mean, I, I think probably our sales for some businesses in town have been up through all of this, but do we have any idea what it's done as far as countywide and what? Has Nita said anything? Do they have any idea?
No, the, when I called Nita about the budget, she, I believe they're reducing the county's budget by 8%. I believe are the numbers that she told me. Uh, I talked to Carl, um, appropriations shouldn't affect, they, they, the consensus I got was, was kind of that the city's- Uh, I talked to Carl, um, appropriations shouldn't affect, they, they, the consensus I got was, was kind of that the city's a little bit more protected through, through all of it than, than what the county is. Uh, but Nita did say they were reducing the county budget by, I think each department by eight percent.
Well, I knew that's where the starting point was, was at least eight percent for county departments, but I didn't know that they'd changed that, or.
I don't know, I have not followed, I honestly have not followed back up and I can do that.
It just might be something to know, I mean, if it's, if it's gonna affect us.
Looking at our sales tax on there, which that was, I mean, just looking at sales tax, one percent, it was like eleven thousand, but, you know, that's a month later and I don't know if that actually would have had much of an effect.
And, and you probably won't see it because they've actually shut down all, I mean, if anybody's even making them, because none of them are actually due until July, I believe, on the sales tax.
We figured grocery store, more people probably might shop local, but.
But we don't get any of that, I mean, that all goes, we still see what it is. We see what it is, yes. Yeah, but I mean, has the city's revenue been down?
I mean, the school, school hasn't been in session.
I, I would like to know that one, that next meeting.
Yeah. I can get the billing statistic reports.
Yeah, here's kind of an idea of what it typically.
A year ago now to today, or, or I mean, you know, last year this time.
That would be nice to know.
Second quarter.
With the school being dealt and stuff.
Because I'm sure we probably lost.
Yeah. Significant.
Twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars worth of revenue. I mean, some of the businesses being shut down and stuff like that. And I don't know, we may have gained more from everybody being at home and having kids at home too.
Yeah.
It may not be that much of a difference.
Yeah. Never have.
Yeah.
I'd watch, I guess, as a example.
Yeah. But that'd be kind of interesting to know about, how it compared.
Okay, anything else, Jamie? Okay. All right, moving on, city attorney, John.
I, I don't have anything unless you talk about this, maybe a thing, other than, other than.
I was just gonna do the land bank.
Oh, anything else?
Okay, anybody have any questions, comments, concerns for John? Okay, moving on. Um, under old business, so we've got Wits Center repair strategic plan ordinance, uh, ten seventy-two dash twenty, ten seventy-one dash twenty, both were tabled. Um, the electric line project for Northwest Street and inventory, anybody have any questions, comments, concerns regarding any of those?
Have they been starting on inventory, or do you know?
Uh, I know Jason has. Yep. Um, can we take the Wits Center off?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, the strategic plan, I've, um, had a little bit of conversation with Jeff with starting the budget process and, um. I told him that I would like to see, you know, goals for the rest of the year, like, you know, and the, the feedback that I get when I bring this stuff up is, um, that they don't know how much money they can, like, they can't say, oh, we wanna do this project, but we don't know if the money's there, and I. I tried to just tell them that I'd like to see what, like, not thinking about like the money part of it, what are things that need done, what would you like to see done? Um, so I'm, I'm hoping that we can get that, um, you know, the, the budget really kind of should be our, our strategic plan, at least for the year, so, you know, moving forward with me doing this year's budget. You know, I'd like to see what they wanna do, um, so hopefully they'll get that turned in, um, like, said by the end of the month, so we could have, I want at least a half of a year of, of goals, um. So I'll keep on them about that, but I just wanted to let you guys know that I'm on top of that again, I, we, I, I tried a couple of months ago before maternity leave and it. It's, you know, it's not been done and trying, trying to, um, formalize things, um, is a little bit of a chore, but we're getting there and I think, I think we'll, we'll get some responses, but. It's just finding the right process and implementing it.
When we're talking about strategic plans, it's kind of the same thing, but, you know, we paid for having our sewer systems cambric. And I don't know if we've ever got a report, I don't know if anybody's gone through it, nobody's told us what we, what they think we need to replace, what we need to have lined.
I had a discussion with Jason about that last week.
Because I know we have some money and if this is such a big concern and always an issue, we need to probably take care of it this summer, rather than waiting another year.
Correct.
Because I do know we have some sewer replacement funds that we can use to take care of some of these bad problems.
Right.
Cause there for a while, we had a lot of problems on the east side of town and a lot of problems on the west side of town.
Yes, when I, when I asked about it, I'm under the impression that Jeff had it and we, I advised him that I believe council would like a report, so he should be on it and we'll be getting something together.
Yeah, I would like to see maybe the sewer, uh, department head to be looking over that, you know, in charge of that.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Just let Jason know that, have something prepared for us for your next meeting, please.
Do you want to put it in the old business?
Actually, I wouldn't mind, but the sewer under old business and just leaving it there, so we don't, so we don't forget it yet.
That, I don't, that was seventeen, seventeen thousand? And then it cost a couple thousand more.
Yeah, we done a couple thousand.
It was just short of twenty thousand or just over twenty thousand, we should probably capitalize on that if we're gonna.
I think we probably should, yeah.
To do it, yeah.
Okay, on, on one thing on the inventory, I guess, uh, just my opinion is, I would probably put that off till maybe the slow months make the winner, just, I would not.
Right, no, I think, I, I believe Jason was working on it when we had the rainy days and there wasn't much that they said that they could do, so he, he didn't have anything that he could do, so he went and, and was working on that.
I just didn't want them under the impression that we wanted that like right away, so.
Yeah, no, it was, it was rainy day, not being able to do anything else, so.
That's a key theory.
Right.
Piece of work, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
And he said, you know, I think he had to do that at the previous city he was at, so he's, I mean, he's really good about lists and organization and so, I mean, he got right on it and.
Good. Okay, anything else in your old business? Okay, moving on to new business, property code violations.
I'm not working with it anymore, so I have pictures, but I'm not showing you them because I can't turn that thing on.
Can we go into executive session to beat it with the chair?
No. I do too.
Want a ladder over here, can we get a ladder? Need that?
Well.
Or not?
So, I really did.
She went for a round.
Didn't work?
The remote won't work.
Oh.
Use a ladder.
Hey, I moved the batteries. The lights don't work.
I, I just wanna say before we look at this, I, I try to include all the codes in, in your packet, but keep in mind that some of these, we don't know necessarily what they look like structurally inside. Uh, so something may look okay from the outside, council may wanna ask permission to any of the property inspected on the inside. The, the other thing is there's a difference between abating a property to clean up junk, which I think is kind of what you said you were getting to at the last meeting versus, Aaron, abating a property that had torn down. So, um, some of these, it's kind of hard to make a decision on as to whether they are unfit or structurally unbalanced property, this part, look at.
Okay, so I might have one out of order and I have a couple that I, I deleted. So this is, um, and I've talked to Ryan and Marshall this morning and they kind of added a little bit to my list here, this is, um, on Fourth and Gray. This is the fr-, that was the back of the house, this is the front. And then this is the side. I mean, it's not. This is the five hundred block of Fourth Street.
Five hundred block.
It's two houses. Yeah, it's two houses down from Danny's house.
And, Jamie, I'm gonna interrupt you, but the last image, the last house, like on the back of it, there's like a porch that's completely caved in and, and maybe.
Yeah.
It's clear, oh, there you go.
Yeah.
So, that, that's what I saw. It's completely caved in.
Well, it started, yeah.
Yeah.
See where it's kind of pulled away from your house.
Like that, yeah, and I was trying to figure out what some of the other problems were and kind of looked at.
This, this one wasn't on our list or anything, but I know that we take care of it, it sits, it sits empty and I think everything that we send to them comes back to us all the time, um, and those, like, there's windows open. I don't know, that's the back of it. This is the, um.
Fourth Street?
The house on North, North Street, they kind of block. It's been, it actually was mowed. The two hundred and fifty dollars I think has helped us a, for at least three yards, so.
And if I could just comment, to me, that structure looks more like a dangerous, uh, unfit structure than like the picture, first two pictures. But again, it's hard to judge that stuff from, from, you know, your.
That house has sat empty for the better part of fifteen years.
Yeah. I mean, I'm looking at the roof, you know.
Because we burnt the house to the next to it down, actually both houses to each side of the north end and south of it, were both burnt down by the fire department and that's been every bit of fifteen years ago when those were done.
This one just made a little tears of that one. So this is, um, the house on North Broadway. You can see.
And I think it's probably been seven years since somebody's removed it.
This is the, the western alley.
Two years ago, it was on the tax sale and it got removed, maybe a few days before.
They paid the taxes on the day before the tax was.
Okay, I have to go back, I, I'm out of order, I wasn't gonna go in the alley and then I did. This is, um, the last pop house on North Broadway, you can see the roof has a little bit of damage, I wasn't able to get to the, what direction? The, the south side of the river, I wasn't able to get to the picture there. And then, that's the back. And then he has, these are just my little pictures. So then we get to Fourth Street, this is the one that we've been dealing with for several years, it's actually, um, on, on Facebook again.
Have they made, have they done something to it though?
Um, they put some silver, they, they came out, was it three years ago they came out?
Well, we done the abatement, though, there's been a week and a year.
Was my first start in.
Threw some paint on it, they played features, not paint.
Yeah, it's got a.
Yeah, you can see here, this is a, this is a hole there.
That's that alley she.
And then this is a fridge, it's, there's still a fridge full of food in there.
Those are the people from Texas.
Yeah, and I actually, when I saw it on Facebook again, I tried to call on the new owners again and they just straight denied my call. I was getting it to where they were talking to me and now they're not even. Um, this is White Earth House, um. Jason is the son of the ring, so he's moved out, the dad moved away, um, they've kind of talked to us about it, just not being local, they can't maintain it, um. He's, he's been in contact with us about it, so we haven't tried to push too much, cause it's a, a big decision for him, so, um, he was actually there when I was taking, taking pictures today and I, I sat there and talked to him for a little bit and, you know, he, he did talk about, you know, there just being too much and they just can't do it, but. The property is in their son, in, in his son thing, I think he has two, so, no, I, I don't know. He, he wasn't offering anything with our conversations, so. And then the house just to the east of that, um, you can see the roof there is.
We need to just pursue that that one get for them?
This one?
No one's lived in it for twenty-five years.
This guy is on First and St. Fay. They're actually taking care of the yard and stuff now, but.
South Monroe?
South Monroe, yes.
Is there a swimming pool that's uncovered in the back?
Um, I can't tell, there's weeds too tall for me to, the last time I went, the, so the time before this alley trip, there was an uncovered swimming pool in the backyard. And this guy. I was going to walk up and get a better picture of the note on the door, so I could try and call, cause I've tried calling that number before, um, but the weeds are too tall, I was gonna wait till ten, but then the one standing from over there.
I think we determined that one was maybe in.
Wait, I think it might.
In fault.
Your lawyer should help you.
Cause those people had come out and then I forgot one twelve South Prairie and I'm sure you guys all know what that looks like. Jeff wanted to take a picture of it, though, I don't know. You wanna see any more of them before I, do we go back through them?
I don't think we've seen every single one of those, but.
They are all abandoned.
They're all.
Well, as far as, as far as that, to my knowledge, they are all abandoned.
Now, the, so we, we thought maybe the Don Glass pop house we had taken care of because they said they would donate it, but I think they found out that they're a lot more tied into that, so it may be one of the deals that we can go and bait it than it is. And I don't think anybody's gonna fight and argue, because I think everybody in the family agrees that it's not worth anything.
There's a judgment against it, uh, this is court, so you wouldn't wanna acquire it unless you'd be subject to judgment.
Gotcha.
Yeah, she was very willing to, to be.
So, I mean, if we go through the abatement process, do we have to notify the people that have the judgment against it?
You would, but I would suspect, it's a bank, so I would suspect that they don't wanna mess with it. I can't remember if interest or US Bank, I can't remember if that one. It may, it may be like an old credit card debt or something like that.
So is it worth a, a chance of just sending them a letter stating this is what, what's gonna happen? Can you release that, or, I mean, if they, if they would release that lien on it, then could it be donated to the land bank?
You, we don't have an order from any court determining who the heirs are, that's the other problem. It's my understanding he did not have children, but if he had, so it would go to, um, his brothers and sisters and if they're not alive, they're children, so we keep. You know, you hear stories about somebody carrying money from a ritual uncle. That sounds like what we're gonna do, and, and I would say, I, I kind of scratched the surface on this, trying to figure it out, and once I started running out of problems, I didn't go any further.
But if we abate it, I mean, we're still spending the money, you'll tear it down, clean it up and then it sits on the tax roll for three years.
And then you're not winning anything, correct? Which is why some of these houses end up. Which is why some of these houses end up the way they are. I mean, there's no incentive for somebody who's inherited something like that to do anything with it.
So which way's cheaper? Is it cheaper to try and figure it out, or is it cheaper to just tear it down and bait it late?
You, you talked to her. They weren't going to do any kind of probate for kids. He died in November, so December, January, March, he's beyond being able... There was nothing else that this guy had when he passed away. I could talk to the niece and figure out whether there's any other reason for them to, to probate his estate. That would be the easiest way. I don't know as a land bank whether there's any reason why we could force them to probate, or whether we could even then do something. You know, creditors have an ability to, uh, to, to ask for the court to determine the heirs. I don't, I'm not a probate attorney, but I don't think there's any way for land bank to... But I could ask my partner. She does all that.
I think it'd be worth looking into. I mean, one way or the other, we're going to have to...
The abatement's the only way they would have truly known the timeframe, the day of start, right?
What do you mean?
Well, as far as digging into going the other route, I mean, you really, I mean, he's asking which is cheaper. That's really impossible to answer, isn't it?
If, if we abate something like that, we're going to have to get a certificate of title to determine who... You're right. You're, we're going to have to notify the owners. And you're going to have to publish. I mean, it, it's almost, you know, I can't let that, which is cheap.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
The only problem is, you're going to be mowing it for three years until it goes to tax sale, or, or not, or whatever caused that.
But that's why I was thinking, you know, if, if for some chance another property owner wanted to purchase it and mow it and have a bigger yard, or someone wanted...
Try that first.
I mean, that would be the only thing with the land bank owning it, is that we could actually, yeah, we're still going to mow it, but I mean, if we tear it down and we get...
My, my only concern is if, if this niece is wanting, if it's, if she's the only one, it makes things easier. But it's possible the cousins aren't talking, which is kind of sort of a complicated thing.
It's, it's actually more than likely, probably, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, I, mo- most times that would be the case. We only visited with her. She's, works in a law firm in Wichita, so she's a little more sophisticated than most other things.
Yeah, it's probably worth checking in and then go from there, I guess.
Yeah, I was just thinking if we could clean it up rather than having to do an abatement on it and wait 60, 90 days and try to find out who everybody is. I mean, we could still be out of a year from now.
Yeah, I...
They could straighten their end of it out and be done with it, sign it over, just be better.
I actually, I was at a meeting back in like 2015, and they were, they were trying to explain how long this process is for abating and the difficulty you run into. And they put together this worst-case scenario, which is these three properties that one tenant kind of took over to store their junk on, but each piece of property, each lot was owned by a different person. So the process just to go in there and clean up those three lots, it was Concordia, I think. And I mean, it was like a year, and then they found out they had the wrong owners, and, because nobody was cooperating, I mean, it was just, it was a mess. And, and the only thing they did was clean up the properties because whoever they sent in to determine whether the structures were sound, found they were sound. So the only thing they did was clean up the properties, which enabled then the, the tenant to store more junk.
But best case on that one is she's the only heir, and then she, right?
Well, and it's her, it's her mom. She is communicating with me because she really was just done. I think she called because she was telling me that we were going to mow it, and they're not doing anything with it. And that's when I kind of tried to get the ball rolling, and, um, she said her mom gets kind of upset when, when things get brought up, and... So, but her mom's the only one that she is...
So she's the sister.
I assume that it's Donald's sister. I don't know if there's more.
It would still need a, a, some kind of determination of dissent proceeding, but those are relatively easy. I, I just, without talking to her, I don't know why it's not what they did. The other thing was, the state has lien rights on that property because he received Medicare. And Jamie talked to the state, and they aren't going to assert a lien on a property because they don't want to take care of it. But they also have a year to do so from November. And so, uh, we would have to get something from the state to say they're not going to assert the lien rights on that property.
As well as the lien that is on it.
As well as the lien that is on it.
So not much to do on part of it.
So it's very tenuous.
So before you go with that, make sure your stuff is lined up.
Just put it in your kids' name.
Yeah, and you're dead, you don't have to deal with it.
And I don't know if he even lived in it because I think it was a joint possession of his mother. As far as I can go, she died in the 70s. So I don't know if this guy can live in it.
I don't know that he's lived, probably he lived here since I've been around. I think he lived, I don't know, wasn't he in a restroom in Wichita?
I remember it. I would say he lived there for sure five years ago, probably. I would say.
A little longer than that?
Yeah.
All right. Any more discussion?
Well, I think we're kind of looking for guidance as to what you guys want to do.
I say move forward with all of them.
Because the first thing we're going to need to do is figure out who owns the properties. And for something like this, my suggestion is, is just instead of paying me to go through each one of those properties, you might be able to reach, you know, with First American Title or somebody in town, but just do a certificate of title, which will list the heirs, any kind of liens against the properties, so we can get a better picture of what these properties are. I mean, you're just, it's going to be not necessarily cost-effective, it's just going to be cheaper to have them do it instead of you.
I see.
So they may be willing to do it for, I don't know, 50 bucks a property versus the amount of money that you take to pay me. That would be my suggestion, so I could do that.
So just call them and, and ask for a certificate of title on it?
Just tell them I've got this number of properties, how much would you charge me to do it?
And do you guys want to set a limit on that, or are you giving me the authority to be able to move forward on all of them?
I think...
At a reasonable rate.
Charge it.
I mean, if there's something clear out of town that we need done for our office, we'll hire somebody to do this, and then we'll kind of verify, kind of back ourselves into it, so to speak, and usually they charge a hundred bucks for one time. So I, I don't know what they would charge for all these properties, or maybe cheaper.
Do, do we think all of them need to be tore down, or some of them just need cleaned? I mean, the couple on the last board, I mean, I don't know what they'd look like.
Well, my next step would be to ask the landowners for permission to, to inspect the property. You know, and, and that's kind of all hands on deck. I'd send law enforcement out there, and Jamie and Jeff, or anybody else that, you know, has that kind of construction background or whatever, just to look at it. And, and that would be to enter the property. I would suspect about 40% are going to allow, allow you to do it, especially if they don't want you to do it, the properties at this point anyways. It might cause it, causes them to donate the property to the land bank.
That's what I would try. Let's say just do it with all of them, start the whole process, renovate the properties, and maybe go through the whole process.
Jamie, just see what you can get done on all of them. Okay. Do we have any more discussion on this?
One more thing. Because we're going to talk about this before you. There was some concern about the cost. What we're going to do is just keep track of our time, so that, and then provide you that updated, kind of on a meeting basis, so that you know how much this is going to cost, so we can kind of get an idea set upon on if we're going to bait this property, how much is it going to cost, and sort of finish.
I think it needs to be done. You know, I know what it costs, but I don't know if we have to town, keep it clean.
And, and like I said, maybe some of this first preliminary stuff, getting, sending letters out and stuff like that will spark some of them to say, oh, we ain't doing this, and they're kind of over. Hopefully so.
And I feel like our first round, um, helps a little bit, and I will be starting, you know, it's been nicer. People have been home, so I will be starting a second round of, of junk as well. But court hasn't been open either, so I don't want to bombard court with, with more, so I'll hold off until we can get a, a start back up on court, and then we'll be doing another round of, of cleanup as well.
Okay, all right. At this time, we're going to adjourn from council meeting and move into land bank.
Call land bank meeting in order. John, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I mean, sometimes I would want to do this during executive session, but I think doing it, uh, most anybody's, attorney-client privilege is yours. If anybody wants to talk about this stuff in attorney-client privileged executive session, if you do so, my suggestion is just to do it in the open, and maybe the video can be watched, and maybe this works without it needing to send a request to attorney general. But I put together a, a letter to the attorney general. I contacted though by the league this morning. Just, they wanted to know what, what happened and what our intentions are. Uh, just, just the attorney from the league following up. And I told her that I thought the city would want to ask the AG for his opinion. And what she suggested, because she's the worker at the attorney general's office, is that we have a legislator to do it. The reason being is because, um, the attorney general's required by law to respond to a state legislator or a, uh, an elected official. He's not required by law to respond to a city, and she says that his response rate is not high when responding to a city. And so I contacted Mary Jo Taylor, and she'd be willing to, um, actually make the request herself. Basically, what it would be was, would be a letter from her requesting and then attaching my analysis to that letter. So I'd have to just rework this slightly. When I talked to the, and I, this is by email, and I talked to the attorney from the league, she also included seven copies of her testimony back in 2009, where she testified in favor of this bill, and had testified again in 2015. And then she put together, there was a, uh, why Doc County was the big pusher of all this stuff. And she included their testimony, which according to Marshall, and, and it just supports the position that this is intended to kind of speed up some economic development as it related to housing, and, and the taxes are intended to be abated, and they're intended to be exempted from subsequent year taxes, so that's my suggestion. Mary Jo's already reviewed it and has already granted permission, so I would just put the letter together. And she said she'd have to wait till, she was going to PICA. I think she'd have to sign it Monday, is what she said when she got back.
I'm good with that, although I don't know.
I think it makes good sense.
Yeah, I think that's a good break there.
I think that's the quickest, easiest way to handle it. I, I don't know how long it'll take in their spawn, but, um, you know, the courts are shut down for me, and just like they're shut down for me, so you might get on it real quick.
I have a second before we talk. Sounds good to me.
The other thing I was going to bring up about the land bank, I made mention to it last meeting. John, what, I know we're set up to discover by the council and mayor. What does it take to maybe change it to leave a couple of council members, the mayor, and add some three outside people to the land bank board?
Just an ordinance. The ordinance now says that the governing body is, are members of the land bank, and then, which gives the mayor a membership, voting membership, which he doesn't have on, on the governing body, but then appoints that it's, you're not the mayor, you're the president, for example. Uh, so you would, we could just retool that ordinance to however you want. You could do it so that, um, there are three members, for example, of, and really, however many you want. So you could do three, three city members as a board, or appointed from the governing body by the mayor, for example, and then those three members pick additional members, or you could have where, um, the governing body president, I don't even know who that is right now, appoints one person to the, to the, is it the marshal's office? And the mayor appoints one person. You could even have the clerk choose some, or the superintendent choose somebody. I mean, literally however you want. And then you stagger their terms. You can do it three-year terms, you can do it...
But we could only have two council members and the mayor.
It, it is a body subject to open meetings, so you're not really, there's no form issues. It has to be open anyways.
Well, I mean, I, I just thought that if, you know, the mayor and a couple of council members, and then we had three other people, it'd kind of relieve... I mean, we've got three people that do a bunch of work already on part of the land bank stuff outside of our council. And then I think it would be easier for the land bank to make a decision that doesn't, you know...
Yeah, I think Hutchinson's ordinance require they do it kind of by industry. They, I don't think it's a requirement, but they try to have one person from the housing industry, one person from like a construction industry, uh, one person that, that, that does, you know, housing planning and that kind of thing. Uh, and, and you could do it, you'd have somebody, a lender, somebody from a lending type industry, somebody from government, somebody, you know, really, it's kind of however you want to do it. And, and I'm not sure it's restricted even at somebody inside the city ordinance.
I just think it would better benefit us if we kind of had something that was separate than just all of us.
Yeah, it's getting bigger.
It's getting tighter.
Maybe a little less stress on them.
I think there's conflicts in the panel.
Right.
Yeah, it's, um, we, we really probably shouldn't be involved with all of this. I mean, if you guys are okay, I would work with John and have a plan of people or how to do it by next meeting, and, because the council would actually have to pass that ordinance, correct, John?
I think that'd be a good idea. Just go ahead and do that.
If you guys are okay with that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm all for separation, segregation, who's what. The, the land banks get bigger by the meeting.
Yeah. Yeah.
It needs to have some full, some full attention of its own, of its own board.
And a fresh perspective from other people.
And, and I think that, you know, I mean, like I said, we've got three other people, and I haven't even spoke to them. I'd like to include them, but they do a lot of this stuff on their own time. I mean, they're, and it's three totally different people. I mean, they look at everything completely different, so I think it would help out a lot better.
Sure.
But, um, I guess I'll just put something together and have it in the packet. The other thing I got is a 10-minute executive session to discuss property acquisition, preliminary property acquisition. Include all of us here.
So...
Got a motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
What did I say, 10 minutes?
Yep. And we'll resume at 8:44.
Call meeting back to order.
I guess with no action taken, there's no other discussion. Going to take the motion to adjourn land bank meeting.
Salute.
Sorry, motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Call this regular meeting, council back to order. Okay, we have a couple of, uh, 10-minute executive sessions. First 10-minute executive session is...
I think we just had the one.
Is yours about what I talked to you last week about?
Did she talk to you last week about?
Department head?
No. Mary just said the first one.
Can I change that to a non-lead person on?
The first one? I think so.
It is all of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's no hiring?
It's a ten-minute non-lead first round.
That's what you want? Okay.
So... So moved.
Okay.
To include all of us here.
Second.
Okay. All right, motion and second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Aye. Executive session resume at eight fifty-six.
Executive session for another ten minutes.
Okay.
Over the same...
To include you, same people?
Same people.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, we'll resume at nine oh six.
Wichita, yeah.
Call this meeting back to order. Um, okay, do we have one more, uh...
Yep.
Ten-minute executive session, attorney-client privilege, non-lead personnel?
Yep.
Okay, and to include?
Uh, attorney, council, and mayor.
Okay. Okay.
As a motion.
Okay, I got a motion, I give a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, we'll resume at nine seventeen.
Yep.
We call this meeting back to order, uh, unless we have anything other, else to discuss, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, meeting adjourned.